Since Mr. Mata is floating down the river somewhere down in central Texas, would anyone wishing to join us for a moment of invocation can do so by standing up and doing that voluntarily?
Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, we come to you today and we thank you. We even thank you for this hot weather. We thank you for our day-to-day, that you are with us. Lord, we pray that you be with our city leaders and our employees and as we move forward, help all of us to make the right decisions in our daily life. Thank you for all that you do. In Jesus's name, amen.
Are we not here? Arthur? Engineer? Okay. Well, I was gonna suspend the rules and have him go first, but since he's not here. All right, we're gonna go on to item three, Performance Services. Mr. Chip Woods?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right, so just a reminder, I'm Jenna Schadowitz.
Chip Woods.
Ryan Quigley.
Si Ganes.
And this is our final presentation to you on the infrastructure projects that we have been working on. I'm gonna go over the scope and then we can talk the finances and any questions.
Okay.
I can press that one. So the four items that we're focusing on in this project are the replacement of the water meters and then a leaded copper line survey, the water distribution system pressure monitoring and leak detection, lighting LED conversion for the rest of your buildings and the Yukon pump station upgrade with the ground storage tank. Can I jump into what you did more?
So we'll go to the specifics in a bit here. So I'll start off by explaining each of the scope here. So first scope is replacing your water meters with new solid-state water meters. So currently what you have is faucet displacement mechanical meters. What does, what happens with those meters as they age is that they go out of tolerance and they'll start measuring lower and lower flow. So you're basically not billing your customers to the extent that you can potentially bill them. So what we are proposing here is to replace those meters with solid-state meters that have no moving parts. So it just purely works on sound waves and they maintain their accuracy for up to 20 years.
Okay, for a point of clarification.
Right.
Okay, let's, 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 let's dumb it down a little bit. So what we exist right now in the meter when we have water flow going from the main line and goes into a resident, what's the inner component that measures the water and the water flow?
Right. Usually, so in this case, what we have is a disc that just vibrates and that's what measures the flow. So what happens is if we have lower flow, then there's like a trickle going through the pipeline, the meters are not gonna vibrate. So these mechanical meters, these are mechanical meters because they have moving parts in them and they go out of tolerance as more water keeps flowing through them. So the accuracy starts off being 100% and they keep dropping off.
So we tested the meters and we'll get into that in a moment. But we tested your meters and the water quality in Odessa is very hard. So it does impact those mechanical meters even more. So when we talk in a couple of slides about the percentage of accuracy, I'm gonna show you the difference of what you guys are looking for here. So then on your slide, what we're showing you is that we tested a really good sample size of the meters. We did not test your eight inches or 10-inch meters and that's why you're not gonna see a savings on that. We will test them, assuming we go and replace them all, so we will show you what they came in at, but we did not have access to test them. But what we're showing you is that most of your meters came in at an average of 93% accurate, which the delta of what you're losing for that 7% is almost $3 million for you. And then what we guarantee it is to 98.5% accuracy. We guaranteed a 98.5, but those meters will come in testing at about 100% and sometimes even a little bit more. Those meters are not gonna degrade. So we have a safety factor on what we're presenting to you. The delta will be above that, but we are guaranteeing 98.5%. And then from an infrastructure standpoint, Chip, you wanna speak to it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've taken a look at the entire city, not to include what's currently existing, but future growth. There looks to be some industrial growth on the southwest. There looks to be a ton of growth on the north side and we've touched on that a number of different times that we've talked about it. So we have planned and working with the different meter vendors, say, okay, well, what does this infrastructure look like? But not, not only would, what does it look like today, but can we plan for the future growth? And so that's, this is a little bit difficult to read because there's no words, but you know.
The little stars.
The, the, the stars and the pins are where there's gonna be infrastructure to help read, read the system. So you can see I-20 cuts from the southwest to the northeast on the slide.
So we're planning for what you have today, but we're also focusing, these meters are gonna last for 20 years. We're focusing on making sure that infrastructure is in the right place for the next 20 years as well.
Well, this, so this will address what exists now in future growth.
Yes.
That's great.
So we have planned for enough repeaters and base stations to hedge that bet and make sure that the areas that are growing are gonna have way more capacity than they need. Now remember which button to press. Wasn't that one? All right, so for the water meters, it is about $30 million for the overall project. But what you're seeing here is that your annual recovery is about 343 million gallons of water per year and about $3 million in the revenue. And that is factoring for what your rates are today. So obviously that will go up as the years go on, as you do in rate increases. The operations and maintenance savings is at $300,000. That is currently what you guys are spending on meters and maintenance on that and having your meter readers go and spend their month doing that. So the payback on this part of the project is eight years. Any questions so far?
Counsel, any questions?
So one of the factors we were looking at is the pressure monitoring and leak detection. There have been certain areas of town that are more susceptible to pressure issues and leaks. So what we've identified is that we are putting about 16 pressure sensors and five acoustic leak detection sensors in various areas and it has gone through and.
Hydraulic model.
A model of that. But the cool thing about these is that they're, you can take them out and reinstall them. So you're able to actually, let's say you find that there, one area of town has a lot of leaks. You have these in, a couple of months from now, you fix those leaks, you can take these meters and sensors and put them in a different area. So they're not only just for one, it's just really gonna show you the whole town as you keep moving them around. And it comes with. Can you touch?
Yeah.
It comes with a access to online, so you can monitoring it, monitor it. It'll give you a lot of information from like the vibration analysis and it will give you more of an insight of what's happening underground before you guys see the leaks or cure of a problem. So it's gonna give you foresight and turns into more of a predictive situation to manage.
It's got some predictive modeling using machine learning. So it recognizes when an event might happen and it'll give you a probability that that event's gonna happen within, there's a 66% chance that based on its learning, that this event might happen. So like Jenna said, you're abs, actually able to be proactive before things are visible to the network.
Let me ask a question. So, you know, we're seeing activity on 42nd Street. Then we wind up having another break here this last weekend, close to the same proximity. So this type of monitoring will monitor vibrations on the lines, kinda like what we see when you wind up having a high-end washer in an older home.
Right.
And then you introduce that capacity into the, into the pipes and you start seeing the rattling.
Right.
Is that what's occurring?
Basically what it's trying to do is measure the pressure variation in the pipe. So every time a valve opens and closes, that's variation in pressure. These pressure variations even should lead to leaks, right? Because there's water hammer, you're basically pushing this water against the pipes and the older pipes are most susceptible to breakage and leaks. So what this is measuring is variation in pressure. And whenever there's a huge pressure draw but pressure increase that's out of normal, then it's gonna figure that point out and it's gonna triangulate where it thinks the leak is and it's gonna point us to the direction. For example, the graph at the bottom here, you can see there are three sensors, number one, number two and number four. They all work in unison and they say that there's a leak where you see the flag marker. So at that point, what happens is it's, even if there's a minor leak, the sensors are gonna listen to that and point us to a location, which is approximate in most cases, but it's gonna, we're gonna walk through and we can easily identify where the leak is happening because we're gonna, we're gonna provide you with a ground mic that's gonna assess or detect where those leaks are. But you're not gonna go through like miles and miles to figure out the leak. It's gonna be a few, within few hundred yards.
Okay.
And these sensors can detect up to two to three miles away from where they're at. So that was how we came to the amount for the area. So it all goes through modeling. It was not just us deciding what works for the city. Any questions on that?
Well, predicting events, I think that's fascinating. Earthquakes? Or could you give an example, give a couple of examples of the events? I think you gave one.
Right.
I've got one. So we use this system closer to the Houston area and just, looks just like this. You see the red flag in that bottom picture there? That popped up, the whole project, the whole team got a text, we got a possible leak. This case was, we called it Four Corners. I sent trucks down there. We caught the fire line that fed a shopping center had just ruptured in the middle of a parking lot. I will tell you, if we didn't catch that fast enough, the HEB floods. And so we were able to catch that fast enough, isolate it, prevented a boil water notice and limited the outage to a much smaller area than we would have otherwise. And I've seen this system with the predictive learning. What water hammer, what, what Si just mentioned, you know, that's just a mass of water that's moving through those pipes, waiting to hit something, usually a 90 or other bend in the line that usually blows it out. There's pressure transients, there are smaller water hammers that last for milliseconds. And that has helped us predict and also optimize our pump operations back at the pump stations. And so that, and that saved us on leaks on old, we had AC pipe down there, the old, just brittle, old brittle pipe and 60-year-old pipe and that reduced our leaks in half once we started getting that and tuning that in. So that's two examples, Councilman, that I, that I have firsthand. I have never dealt with it with earthquakes, so.
And just another offset to that, for Public Works right now, would you say that we're, with the technology that we have, we're kinda running blind because we can't see that? We can't see this information today? Okay. Thank you, Chris.
You gotta take a little.
I didn't get a lot of sleep last night, I confess.
So moving on to lighting, this is the remaining LEDs that you have in the city. When we did our survey, about 90% of the savings already converted, so this is what's left. You'll see a lot of the fixtures are not in really busy areas. So really the savings on, the payback is 20 years for this, but it's because the majority of the areas that have not been done are not used that often. The Darrington plant and the pool and the water. Yeah, those were really where the savings was coming from on here. Moving on. All right, the Yukon pump station. So basically everything that we just went through, the water meters, the LED lighting and the pressure sensors have given you the ability for, to create a project that pays for itself. One of the benefits of this project is that not only does it pay for itself, that it is gonna pay for the Yukon pump station upgrade. So we're looking at about $10 million for the Yukon pump station. Ryan will take over the details in just a second. But all of this is getting away from the city needing bond money to complete projects. This is gonna be paid for through the water meters.
So with, and through the process, since we last visited, visiting with staff, et cetera, this was a huge need for the city because of all the development that's gonna happen on the north side, the upper pressure plane. So once we figured out the, the revenue we were generating, it's gonna be perfect. This was in the 2019 master plan for Odessa and we're in 2023 now and this still wasn't done for whatever reason. And so we decided, let's put this in the forefront, this will allow Odessa to grow. It has 2 million gallons of storage and I believe another, I can't remember how many MG, 3,800 gallons a minute in pump capacity, which is a lot for now. Eventually there'll be, need another pump upgrade down the road, but for now, this is a great start for that upper pressure plane.
So, any questions on that?
Well, question, I've got one question is that, but for, that's at Longdale and so the growth is east of Longdale, which I think is uphill. So that's still gonna be able to handle that because it's going uphill.
Yeah, this is from an engineering report.
I know you don't think there's hills out here.
Yeah, I learned there were hills, you know, when I, I didn't realize, I think of Odessa, you think it's about as flat as it gets. But yeah, it's 50 feet of elevation change between the, the south and the north side.
That's why you don't see it.
Yeah, and so, but this was engineered, using the hydraulic model similar to what Si just mentioned on where and what needs to happen in the system. This was a key project, to be able to handle all that, that future growth out that way.
Of course, with the topography taken.
Yes, that, all that's taken into account through the hydraulic model.
I was just trying to make sure because I know that the water tower that was planned was not an upgrade. It was a new one out at Parks Bell because it's the biggest development we have going out there right now. And that's a lot of people moving, a lot of homes being built out there, I guess. Plus, plus the ones being built on Yukon at Grandview. So we had two projects going to that proximity that's gonna add another 4,000 or 5,000 houses. So that's why I'm worried about the.
So right now the capacity on that tower on Longdale, what's the capacity on that?
On the Longdale Tower, is that the one we call, what's that, Rainbow?
Rainbow. 2 million gallons.
2 million gallons. So yeah, that's, that's already kind of at capacity right now, which is why this is kind of a phase one in the master plan. This gets the, the core foundation in place to be able to build the water tower that needs to go up on, I think on the north side, northeast side out there. This is what has to happen first, then that can happen.
Okay, so this will be able, the additional 2 million will be able to push the gravity flow on the power grid going to the northeast and then go to the west. And as, as all that pressure starts going down, what about the, well, I don't know. We'll, we'll get back to that because I wanted to bring up the District 5, West County, University of the Third.
One of the things you're not seeing in this project right now is the Darrington plant.
Yes, that was gonna be the other one, so I wanted to bring up the Darrington.
On that one, the pressure sensors, we originally had them on the north plane around 42nd Street. Then we added them along West County Road. So between University and Third, and I think it's, I can't remember the street, but there was one that identified that the homeowner had around 20 PSI.
Realizing, so we were experiencing, so experiencing sort of low pressure for a month where in the afternoons, or even, I think even one of our employees lives in that area and we were experiencing little to no pressure at all in certain hours. And it was from West County West?
Yeah, it's, it's actually on the left side of that screen.
University of the Third Street inside the loop, correct? Because I'm, I mean, for building collection, he was affected by that. So, so I think we looked into it and I asked PSI to look into that.
And that was one of the extra ones we, we added. So it is on the map because we wanted to focus on that area as well.
Okay, and then I wanna circle back on about Darrington, so go ahead and continue, we'll circle back on that.
So I am almost done and I wanna talk about Darrington, but real quick. So these are the four measures that we did and I know we've spoken about Darrington, that was the fifth measure. Darrington is not on here for right now because this project pays for itself and pays for Yukon. Darrington has energy savings associated with it. So we wanted to let that go up to Council and see how you guys wanna work with Darrington. We know that that energy savings can either be used to renovate Darrington and offset any money that the city would need to do those renovations or even perhaps you guys have additional needs for pump stations on the west side, then that savings when you renovate the plant can be used for additional projects, just like Yukon is being made for. So that was why we separated it out and it still has its useful upgrades on that, but we didn't wanna combine the two without being sure that that was the direction.
And it's a different procurement method as well.
Yeah. Anything with a wastewater treatment plant would have to be with a request for qualifications and a design project. So from a procurement standpoint, we can't marry the two, but we wanna make sure that you guys can utilize the energy savings with Darrington in the way that this is.
Okay.
So what you see here is the total of the project is $42.5 million with a 10-year payback. Questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Well, I'm curious about the timeframe. Of two.
Got it.
Just putting it together.
Yeah, so right now I have where we're at currently. This is our projected timeframe. What you're gonna see is obviously if we go ahead with this, we're gonna execute on our contracts and our subcontracts really quickly. We're gonna get the meters in. The meters will take a while to install. You have 42,000 meters. It does take a long time.
Well, your long time would be equated to how?
Q3 of 2025 is our projection at the moment if we were to approach it with one crew. There is the possibility that we can hire multiple crews and minimize that, but it also depends on when the meters come in. So we don't want to have the installers ready to go if we don't have all the meters. So we'll, we'll stage that out. The LED lighting will be complete by between Q1, Q2 of 2024. The leak detection pressure monitoring should be complete by Q3 of 2024. And then the pump station, design of Yukon and the elevated ground storage tank, we will kick that off during the design right away. TCEQ has to approve everything that we're doing, so that takes about 90 days after the design is complete. So we predict, give or take some time, Q3 of 2025, the pump station will be designed and installed and ready.
And you do the prioritization for our weaker areas where 73 are having water pressure problems?
And we can work with you guys to dispatch that however, however the city wants to.
You wanna go over the finances?
One thing I wanna mention on this cash flow, so this shows you kinda where all of the money's coming from and how it works. And one thing, I, I know it's a lot to look at, but I wanted you to see our financial modeling, that the takeaway is not only will you have the entire project, but at the end of the 20-year financing, Odessa will have an additional $15 million from all the different saving measurements. So that is something to look at, which is guaranteed by PSI. So it's something to look at as maybe perhaps you guys utilize that 15 million and put it towards something else. Like the more eyes you have on it, it will alleviate the burden of ever needing bond money for certain things like that. So it does help to offset what you guys are looking.
Counsel, any questions? So you get the breakdown from 26 down to 23.
And this is the two years of deferred payments because we're not gonna do a payment while we're still installing. So this gives enough room for the water meter savings and lighting savings to keep come up. So you have that in approval before a payment is there.
Yeah, yeah. So the $15 million that becomes available, becomes available when?
So that's what you're gonna see in excess. So it's gonna be direct to the city and you'll see each year is different. We do have a cumulative. And this is with our safety factor. So like I said, we're showing you 98.5, that extra 1.5%, we have nothing to do with, but you're gonna see that in your city funds as they come in.
And we also calculated, I said, we, Si calculated an extra 30% almost in contingency. Not contingency, just we didn't, we didn't account for it. So when we did the modeling rates, and you could speak a little bit better to it, but we used a higher rate, right?
We used a lower rate.
We used, we used $8 versus $11.
So you wanna explain why?
Yeah, I can explain why. So, so the, we used a rate of 8.64 per 1,000 gallons to calculate the savings. Particularly your costs are, could be assessed as 10.5. The reason for that is you're selling water to ECA and the ECA costs are at a much lower rate, around 3.2 cents, 3.2 dollars per 1,000 gallons. So what the ECA rate does is brings the entire average down for the, for the entire city.
For everybody.
Down to 8.64, that's the number we're using. But we are not taking any savings for the ECA. So we're gonna replace the ECA meter as well, but we're not claiming any revenue, additional revenue on that meter because we didn't, we are not able to test that meter when we did the meter testing, so we're not taking any revenue. So ideally we could have used the 10.5 to calculate the savings, but we're still using the conservative 8.64 dollars per kilogram gallon.
We're conservative.
Very conservative.
So the money will, so basically is what happens as, once 26 in the installation, you'll start seeing, we're, we're reducing. So basically what we're doing is we are closing the gap on 10% of what we're losing right now and kind of theory on the, on our revenue for water because of the mechanism in the meters.
From the 93 to the.
Yeah. And so you'll start incrementally, as this starts coming online, we're gonna start seeing that increase. And it's not really a, a jumping rate, but just because the accuracy.
Correct.
And so you'll start incrementally, you start seeing those savings on, on the water side. But we'll see it quicker on the LED, on the electricity, which will wind up reducing the savings on the operation and maintenance. And so the estimation is around 15 million.
15 million excess after the project has already paid for?
Yeah.
Which is 10 years.
20.
20 years.
20 years, yeah.
And there's no penalization if you decided to pay it off, there's none of that. So if you did wanna decide 10 and the money was coming in faster, there's no problem.
They kicked it out, they can't wait to hear.
No, that's what I was saying. We took that out just because we wanna make sure that we use your savings, not because we don't think it needs to be done.
Yeah.
Okay, quick, Counsel, any questions? Okay, on the Bob Darrington. How can we address that issue as far as, I know we have concrete issues. We have sludge that basically we are disposing of, which is added waste. So we're, you know, so whatever, whatever system, and I don't know what it is, but you know, in my mind, it's like a squeegee system. As opposed to squeeze out with all the sludge and squeeze out the water. But what we're doing is we're transferring that with intact with the water, which is adding weight, which is adding tipping fees. So that was a new system, I guess. Went from a layout ground and allowing that to evaporate and then just throw away the, the waste minus the water. So we used it within the system that's not working because of its age and deterioration. So how do we start addressing the Bob Darrington as far as, you know, if, if we're saving here, there's two things that the council could wind up doing as the BRIOTIC starts saving. It needs to invest either to buy down debt or the Bob Darrington, Bob Darrington is the bigger need. But estimating, I think Kelly, Kimberly Horn did a 2018, 2019 study, it was at $287 million?
That's for a new one.
That's brand new.
Our idea, if you would allow us to discuss any of that.
Can, can we discuss that?
Yes.
Okay.
Our idea and with talking to the city, talking with Gopie, is that we think renovating that plant, and correct me if you guys know, we think renovating that plant is a much better option. The thought process that we've had is building an additional racetrack and I should have brought the drone footage because we have cameras, I apologize. But to add an additional racetrack, so you guys have the ability to use for extra capacity and then while that new one is built, we go back and rehab the other two racetracks that are falling apart is a little bit of a risk.
Okay, so explain the racetrack.
Okay, so the racetrack, if y'all are familiar with Bob Darrington, we call it an industry a racetrack. Most of the time these things are like an oval, like a NASCAR or car racetrack, but these are shaped as an L. So if y'all been out there, you've seen those L-shaped water ditches, basically. Those aerate the water, which helps the sewer process itself and get clear water out of the back. And then the other thing is lets it settle when it goes into the clarifiers. Those are falling apart, for sure, the first two feet of, above the water line, which is common in the concrete. That's where the sulfuric, the nasty gases react with, with the air, eats the concrete away. That's real common for older plants. What we don't know is how far down it goes. I'm a little bit worried after seeing some of the rebar and how far down it goes. So the thought process is, is we build a third racetrack that gives you an additional 5.5 million gallons a day in treatment alone. And then while, when we get that online and we go back and we can take those down, clean them out and give a good evaluation of the concrete from the ceiling to the, or the floor to the top and then see if there's anything we need to do mid-level. A lot of times you don't, but just looking at this particular one, just seeing the, the rebar and what's happening there, I'm a little bit worried that a rebar spreading underneath, it could be spalling that, that concrete out below the water line. So that's the only thing.
Is why we took that out as one of the options. Because there was a lot of risk if we were to do the concrete work in this project without having a third racetrack. If it crumbled, you'd have to go over it to Gulf Coast and that would cost a ton of money. That was too much of a hard day for us to not know how that was gonna go. So without the third racetrack, it would be a big challenge if things keep going around.
And then on, on the sludge, we've already looked at, I've got a preliminary memo on going back to drying beds and there's even some other technology that uses the sun, something we have a lot of in Odessa to help, to help dry it even further, better than what the belt presses can do. Just so y'all, just some numbers out there. Belt presses get to about, I think this one's 14 to 16% solids, which means that's 85% water that we're taking to the landfill. If we could take it out, use our dry air and our sun out here and maybe even some further technology, we can, we can cut that, double it and get it to 30% solids and haul a lot less water to the landfill. So, and there's even some other beneficial reuse stuff I've looked at. I just, that's further discussions we'll have to have later down the road.
But really our goal, obviously today is to look at this, but like going forward, what we wanna do is put together a financial model for you to see really what the tipping point is of, what, at what point do we do renovations, at what point it pays off? Kind of show you what we've done here and make sure that it's the best business practice for Odessa before spending any more money. And we're not waiting 20 years.
No, wait 20 days. Jenna's words to me were, start tomorrow.
I hate for it to go down.
Yeah.
Well, adding the other racetrack, it, it's another source of revenue for the city.
Sure.
So it's, the rip and replace, you know, everyone loves new. So it's, um, you know, the, the rip and replace, um, you know, everyone loves new stuff, but it's, you know, if we can do it for, you know, a quarter of the price and then increase the capacity, you've got additional revenue and the city owns all of it. Um, you don't lose that control.
Understand. Council any other questions? Any other comments? So, uh, are we seeking a consensus to move on for, put this on the agenda? Are we putting it on the agenda?
The financials is already on the agenda for six o'clock.
Okay.
But not, yes.
Okay, I was just wanting to make sure, so.
Are you asking for a consensus?
On the Bob Derrington.
Find the finances on the, uh, on the, on the six o'clock. For, for a further discussion. Okay. Is there anything else that you guys needed to add on with this?
But I, if we, if we can, I mean, I. Yeah, that's, that's what I'm asking, Mayor, y'all, you wanna do a consensus to put, for them to put together a proposal for Bob Derrington?
Yes.
Yes.
So basically, yeah, so basically what, you know, since we got the finances on, wanna ask the council if we can come up with a consensus to put something together for the Bob Derrington? Take a look at it.
I move.
I move so.
All right, sounds good.
Great.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move on to item four, uh, retail coach update, Aaron Farmer. I don't think we're doing that, are we? No, I don't think so. So we need to table, we, we did. Okay, so.
Yeah, just table.
Yeah, so. So we have a retail coach update, Aaron Farmer. Uh, do I have a motion to table this item for a future, uh, scheduling? We will have to contact them.
Also move.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Vazquez to, uh, to table item four for future date, seconded by Councilmember Cornell. All in favor, indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, indicated by saying no. Motion as unanimous. Gonna move on to item five, discuss options on Odessa Soccer Association building at Sherwood, Mr. Reyes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So just right off the bat, I just wanted to thank y'all for having me today and to say that, even though we're coming up with the possibilities of the options of the building, we just wanna make sure that we understand that the city still supports soccer. I support soccer and we have nothing against soccer, but the process that was taken to put this building at Sherwood. So with that said, it's been my understanding, while I'm getting situated with my new position, that the Soccer Association has been playing and practicing on the UTPB complexes at UTPB for the past twenty, twenty-five years. It's also my understanding that in about roughly, uh, August or September of twenty nineteen, UTPB wanted their facilities back, but yet was able, was willing to make a two-year contract with the city for the Soccer Association to stay there so that until they could find a permanent, uh, pla- place to play. Sorry. So whenever they were, whenever they moved, needless to say, what happened was, oh, the Odessa Soccer Association and the previous Parks Administration had been in talks way before the understanding came with UTPB and made plans without council's approval to move O S, O S A, Odessa Soccer Association to Sherwood Park on a verbal agreement. Now, let's remember, Sherwood Park is a community park. The crown jewel of the city, of the city's par- uh, park system, community parks provide open space and natural areas for generally unstructured recreation, as well as facilities such as pools, uh, spray grounds, hiking bike trails, picnic pavilions and exercise stations for structural recreational activities. Through the recent master plan, Sherwood Park has and is designated as an open space community park. In July of twenty nineteen, a permit was issued to Odessa Soccer Association, giving them permission to go ahead to, to move, to begin the process moving their building slash storage slash offices.
Mr. Reyes, you mean twenty twenty-one, July twenty twenty-one?
Was a permit issued on July twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, I think it was July the thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so I think the two, twenty nineteen was whenever the process started to move.
Yeah, it started here, yes, yes, I think that's right.
I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
But the first permit was issued, I think, July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Correct. So they got the, the approval to move the, the building over to Sherwood. This permit allowed them access to building a foundation, which was about twenty-six point five by eighty point five feet. Their building, once built, didn't even fit on the foundation, so there's already an issue there. Uh, anything can happen. Uh, once, well, it, once it was built, they also needed, uh, a service, they needed a sewer line, they needed, uh, electric. And from my understanding, Odessa Soccer paid upwards of two hundred and fifty million, or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get that building moved. So whenever they needed the sewage, they were saying that they didn't have enough money, so they leaned on the Parks Department for them to pay whatever else was remaining.
So how much, do you want that number was?
I don't, I'm sorry.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the permits were issued and the permits were never paid for by Odessa Soccer.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm gonna get down to that, because when that, actually, whenever that permit was issued, it was issued to the wrong address. It was actually issued to Bethany Christian Church at forty-five twenty-two North Everglade. So that never had any.
Twenty-two forty-five?
Forty-five twenty-two?
Forty-five twenty-two.
Yes, sir.
Do we know why it was issued to the church?
We have no idea. When we did our, our, when we looked it up and we got Elizabeth involved, that's the, that's the address that came up. So, and we're right across the street from that, so maybe it was a mistake, I don't know. Water to the building was needed, Odessa Soccer decided to hire somebody outside. They started, uh, running their lines, cutting about seven or eight of our irrigation lines, uh, without even letting us know. They repaired them, then we had to come back and repair them again. Electrical service, like I mentioned, was also run on the nearest telephone pole. Concrete was, uh, the, the sidewalk was cut and it still hasn't been repaired, which creates a, a trip hazard. Uh, and from my understanding, we've had some complaints and some claims of people getting hurt on that little section. I've contacted, uh, Mr. Martinez, and he said that it's just something that's waiting to, to be fixed amongst everything else that they were doing. Cause they were still currently building inside, uh, inside the building, they were building some offices for, to move the entire Soccer Association offices there.
What are the dimensions on that building?
Twenty-six and a half by eighty and a half. And it's got some surrounding pads that lead to the concession stand, to the overhead door and to the entrance to the concession stand, which is about, I think it was about ten feet by thirty feet.
That certainly doesn't sound like a shed that we approved.
No, it's huge. It's a shed slash, it's a concession stand on the east side, and then the middle is supposed to be their office space. So.
Mr. Reyes, I'm unclear on one thing. The lines that were, our water lines that were cut in the park?
Yes, sir.
The, they did their own trenching?
Yes, sir.
The, the association did?
Yes, sir.
Without permission from council or the Parks Department or anybody else? Okay, wasn't, it wasn't vendor or anything?
No.
Okay.
No.
They did hire a vendor to, to bring water and sewer in?
They used the, our city department for the sewer to put that in, and I guess, uh, Parks is what I understand paid for it. Cause they were saying that with all the expense that they paid to move the building, which two hundred and fifty thousand, they didn't have enough to pay for sewer electrical and everything else that was still needed.
Yeah, I can shed a little light on that, cause, uh, Scott Tiny sent me a copy of the permit he got to replace that water and sewer line. And they paid him directly for it. Cause I was rea- I couldn't figure out how, how that was done.
Okay, so who's Scott Tiny?
Uh, Scott Tiny did, does a lot of work for us.
Uh huh.
And, uh, he's an, he's an independent, but he does all the bell stuff and Larry Lee's, but, but I, but he got the building permit from, it wasn't from Elizabeth's area, it was from.
It was from engineering.
Bec- because, engineering, because it had, he had to go into the street and tap it, so he's gotta repair it, which he did. And he sat, and sat the water meter, and they paid him directly for that.
I think that was on December sixteenth.
Cause I started researching what the heck happened when I saw that.
Sixteenth of what year?
Last year.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-two.
So.
So let me get this straight in my mind. So we got city permits on the building, but it went through engineer and it never went.
For that one.
For that one, okay. And the association didn't have the two hundred and fifty thousand to pay, so they came to our Parks Department and we, we picked up the difference on that.
No, supposedly they paid the two hundred and fifty do- two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to move it from the existing UTPB complex.
A shed?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to wrap my brain around a shed being two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which what prior council voted for them to move from UTPB to Sherwood.
No, there was never a vote.
Well, we, we gave them access, if my memory serves them correct.
But there was never a, a vote.
Not on that two, the building or the two hundred and fifty thousand, but to move their supplies from UTPB to Sherwood.
There was never a vote by any, by the former council.
Okay.
Mayor?
Wasn't even a consensus, I would that.
Did you, okay.
Yes, sir.
So just to add to what Mr. Reyes is talking about, when the discussion of the meters, uh, of the permits and for the taps and so forth were to discuss, the former administration instructed the building official to go ahead and push it through, that they would figure it out later.
Okay, so like Councilmember Swanner said, let me, let me get this thing right. So, Mr. Reyes, you contended that this process started in twenty nineteen. What process began in twenty nineteen?
The negotiation of moving soccer from UTPB complex to Sherwood Park.
So, so I'm trying to recall back, so in, at the soccer complex, there was a metal building, because there was also a fence that was removed. Remember the cycle fence? So there was a metal building they used for storage.
Correct.
But no way was it a twenty-six by eighty.
No.
After talking to the building inspector, he said that whenever they moved it over here, that they added on to it.
So this happened in twenty nineteen?
Before.
Twenty twenty-one is when all this.
Twenty twenty-one, yeah.
But, but there was, you said there was a discussion about moving the building from, from the, from UTPB in twenty nineteen?
There was a verbal agreement given to them by previous administration. I guess they were already in the talks, cause they knew what was coming. And so at that point, they started already, uh, getting prepping.
Yeah.
Prepping where they were gonna put that.
So, but he, but, but, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to figure that out, because the thing is, is we were elected in twenty twenty.
Correct.
You came on first, and then we came on after the fifteenth, in, in January.
Right.
We weren't made aware of any movement from UTPB until Ju- uh, uh, summer of twenty-one.
Right.
July twenty-one.
That's right.
During that time, you, I've gone back and looked at the minutes and read the minutes and everything. The former council told the former city attorney and city manager to talk with UTPB. You didn't say anything about, oh, we'll move it or allow this.
Correct.
Now, Tom Martinez stood here and said, oh, we're gonna move it all to Sherwood, but y'all never took, the former council never took a vote to say, hey, yeah, you can do that, or hey, there's a consensus here. I haven't even looked at the video, there's nothing.
No, we never, we never gave approval for that. We basically is.
It was done behind y'all's back, basically.
Okay, so in, in this process, it started in nineteen. Then when we came on, we had this discussion, because I remember specifically the summer of twenty-one.
Yes.
Where there was a call to mu- you know, and this was a Sunday, that we had a call PD. For the reason is that we had associations dismantling equipment on UTB that were, uh, shades, things that, and removal of things within the concession stands and physical bearers.
Correct.
So we had to put a stop to that, and then I, and, and former, uh, Parks Director had given verbal consent.
Correct.
So let me, so, so basically the discussion of moving the, the initial storage facility back happened in nineteen, then in twenty-one, officially it all began.
Officially.
Well, verbal agreements.
There was nothing ever written, council never did a vote, it didn't even do a little consensus.
Okay, so let me ask this other, so let me ask this other question. So then, the Soccer Association committed two hundred and fifty thousand for moving the, 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 uh, the building, the storage facility at UTPB to be replaced at, uh, Sherwood.
Yes, sir.
Then they added on to it, and so then they ran out of money, and then there was a commitment by the, uh, well, and I'm gonna ask this question, who, who these individuals are on the city side, to cover the cost after they exceeded and burned through the hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Correct.
So there was a commitment to make up the, the remaining cost of the sewer.
Of the total cost.
The total cost of water and sewer, and which was a one-inch tap and a four-inch.
Mr. Martinez told me that they had exhausted all their monies moving that building over.
Okay, and so do we, so there has to be a, a trail of that payment. Uh, Seth? And so, can you, so the, how do we track that payment from whether it came from Parks? And then right now, uh, we have a copy of to Mr. Scott Tiny uh, for a one-inch.
Both of them.
Okay, right here we have forty-six thousand five hundred. So, but we're also talking about electrical services and things of that nature. So we have, we need to track that and find out where that money came from, who signed off on it, and who are people responsible for this.
Mayor, I think, uh, Mr. Salsi doesn't have a word.
Yeah, my understanding is that the, the association paid Mr. Tiny directly.
Okay.
That's what he told me.
Mr. Salsi, you got, you got something to add on this?
Yes, Mayor and Council, on, on the permits and stuff like that for the water, we have no recollection, no paperwork, anything on Sherwood.
So this was done off the books?
Yes.
She's got a copy of the permit.
We don't have anything showing water tabs. We have a email from a staff member from inspection saying, everything is passed, go set the meter. But there's nothing else. No payments, nothing.
Well, Mr. Benau, you said something, the fact that there was, uh, uh, former, former, uh, leadership basically said is, get this, uh, pass the, 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 the permit. Uh, what was, what was it basically, you, we'll take care of it later?
Yes.
So what information do you have, and how did you come about it?
This is discussions that we had with the building official, who indicated to us that he was instructed to push this through. Um, and he attended a meeting with the, with the former assistant city manager, the former Parks Director, and the former planning and zoning director. Uh, at which point, this was discussed, and he was basically told that he needed to get this done.
Get it done.
Issue these permits.
And.
And then when the, when the discussion came about over taps, the, these taps that, that he was instructed to push them through by the pilot Parks Director, and that we would figure it out later.
Make it right later.
We would make it right later. So, and here we are later.
And we're dealing with it, we're fixing it later. Okay, so, so let me ask this question.
The permit was issued to the Soccer Association.
Soccer Association, at forty-four hundred North?
Yeah, forty-four hundred North Everglade.
Answer the, so what do you, how can you expand on the services for the electrical at the church? At Bethlehem, uh?
Hopkinikes.
Can, can you, you went down that road, you said that there was a permit issued to the church?
Yes, so whenever, we were wondering if permit was pulled, we did our investigation, and Liz brought up that she found, she found a permit, but that it was, I think it was Liz. She found a permit, but that it, the address on it was to the church across the street.
Okay. So is that where the service, was there a tap-in from that church?
No.
No?
I mean, the, the pole sits right across the street. I mean, the the pole sits right across the street from the church, right directly across the street, and then the building is here, so.
Okay, so here's, here's, here's my question here. Um. All this being, well, they poured, they also poured concrete.
Correct.
Mayor, you may want to get the building official here.
Who is the building official?
Gary Albinoff could go.
Yeah, I would go get Mr. Owens.
Yeah, but go get him because he, what he told Mr. Doherty, myself, uh, Mr. Reyes is. And, uh, Ms. Shaughnessy, I think y'all need to hear it firsthand.
Let me ask this question. Did, uh, did you contact Mr. Martinez with soccer association and we, that was, you guys were going to discuss and put this on the work session?
I have not. Mr. Reyes has been a point of contact.
Yeah.
And so did Mr. Martinez offer, volunteer all this information?
Did he volunteer this information? No, sir. Some other information that I got from him is when I first got hired. Roughly over a little bit of a mo- about a month ago. He called and wanted to take me to lunch. We went to lunch. And at that point, he started telling me his biggest concern is where we were on planning, sprigging the the grass that we had talked about before. He wanted to know where we were because he was promised that. And then he's just went off.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. He was promised?
That it was going to be done.
Yeah, but it was gonna be sprigged.
Yeah, it was gonna be sprigged. And that was the hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar price tag that I brought to y'all.
Well, we generous.
So that's why he was, he wanted to see where we, where we stood and how quick we were gonna do it. During the conversation, he kept on going saying how, and he mentioned about how whenever he was told. To pull the goals and pull everything and hurry up and do it. He said that every time he would step foot on the UTP premises, he was followed by an officer.
On UTPB?
Yes.
Well, that's, that's, that's got nothing to do with us.
Right, but I'm just saying that the way they're taking the goals and everything else that belonged to them, I guess they were just making sure. I don't, I don't want to speak, you know, I'm trying to accuse them of anything, but.
Well, here's one thing I do know, is that they kept talking about that storage building over there. Number, number one, I think it was blue. Number two, it was rusted from the bottom up.
Some of it is still.
Conversation that I remember and bolted to the slab.
And that's probably why they did the addition because some of it is still rusted, but it's not blue.
You're right. That, that was discussed. It was not usable. It was, it was rusted.
And that's probably when they added. Took out maybe the bad and put the new, but there's, it's not blue, it's beige.
Well, the thing is, let me ask this question. And then this is for, uh, Mr. Jones. You know, prior discussion when UTPB was still designated a city park. There was an email that I pulled from all that fiasco.
Right.
That the former city attorney was an internal, uh, uh, email to the entire, uh, management, including the parks. That there was a pending issue that was outstanding. Because UTPB was designated by the city as a park. Uh, that action of de-designating it and taking it out of the system was never done. When I questioned. Everybody within that email.
Yeah.
They said, well, it's not, it's a non-issue. I said, well, if it's a non-issue, then why'd you go to the extent to discuss it over a period of thirty days?
That's why we are working on to, I guess, uh, what the ordinance, we're gonna take UTPB out.
Yes.
We're working on, and we're gonna do add the complex in.
Yes.
Uh, that's what we're working to do. So do one big, big sweep is what we're working on.
Okay, so the reason why I ask that question is to follow up on this question. And that question is this. The discussion then, that all the goalposts and everything that was already in the UTPB.
Right.
Was the property of the city.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So as of now, that building, that pole, every goalpost, everything that is grounded within the city is the property of the city.
Property of the city at Sherwood.
We gave permission to the association to remove those in accordance with the agreement of UTPB.
Yes, we did. And but everything that sits there.
Is ours. Is, is, is public, is public, public property.
It is, it's public property. It's the city of Odessa. And section twenty-four of the charter gives the city of Odessa its full right over all recreational playgrounds, parks.
Okay.
And also, as my memory serves me correctly, Jones, they weren't supposed to be permanently.
They were not supposed to be cemented in.
Cause that was.
Yes.
We did, we, we specified.
We specified that and they went ahead.
Be moved around.
Yes.
Also, Mayor and Council, also understand that because those, those, uh, those goals are now part of the, a real property. They're part of the Sherwood Park, part of the city of Odessa, okay? Now, we also must understand too that, that because they are ours. We can control who goes and who doesn't go in those buildings and everything, okay? So because that building is now our property, it's just on our property. And I believe, and then Mr. Benau will have to correct me, but I believe there is a stop work order on there. Because they were actually going in at night. Correct me if I'm wrong.
After we started.
At night?
Yes.
And they were working in the middle of the night, working to build out office spaces for the soccer association. And there is gonna stop work on that.
There, there was a stop work put on the door.
Yeah.
Uh, I actually went, I actually stayed in my office till about nine last night.
Yeah.
And I went by the office or by that building.
Right.
Just to verify measurements. I wouldn't tape measure everything and they already ripped off the, or somebody ripped off the do not work, stop work. Tag from the door.
Okay.
And there was some plywood sitting outside and that's gone as well.
But also the, uh, understand too that the former city manager did not have the authority without all of you. Without the former council that would be giving him permission to allow them on there. If that makes any sense. He acted without authority to do so.
Okay, um.
That's where the, the problem goes.
So we have some questions on the permits. Someone?
Yeah.
You come up here. Good afternoon, sir. So real quickly, how many permits were issued on this project there at Sherwood, forty-four hundred North Everglade?
Well, the addresses are a mess and that's a big problem and.
Walk us through, walk us through that process. What happened?
Uh, well, we gave a permit for a, uh, storage facility for the building only, a building shell only. And we addressed it, I gave it an address.
But Mr. Owens, let me interrupt you. I want, start from the beginning, what you told Mr. Benau, Mrs. Shaughnessy, myself, and Mr. Reyes. Who was at the meeting?
Oh, the very beginning.
What were you told? You were told to go fetch.
I was told to issue this permit that we had.
Yeah, start from the beginning, like you did with us when we were out at Sherwood here, bottom up.
Yes, well, I was called up to the conference room on the fifth floor to Michael, Philip, Randy Brenley and, uh. Steve Patton was up there, or it was leaving when I was up there. And, uh, was told that the building over at UTP had to move and we had like sixty days to get it moved, period, end of this, end of discussion. Because of some contract I'm not aware of with UTPB, you know, or had nothing to do with. And it issued permit. So at that point, we, we started issuing a permit for the storage building.
Were you told to follow the normal process? Were you told to follow the rules, follow the law?
I wasn't told anything other than let's make, we gotta make this happen now.
Period. Do it. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
And, and so we issued a permit for a, and my, my permit is for a storage facility only. Uh, and then, and then since then, and, uh, our, my office didn't catch it, now, you know, it's our fault, but. They got a permit for an electric service for an oddball address, which is forty-four hundred, which is across the street. Should have never happened, but it slipped through our cracks. You know, I don't know what to tell you, except that's what happened. And that's a service for that building, electric service for that building.
Okay.
I kept telling them there was a plumbing there, but there was never a water tap or a sewer tap. Well, since I have found a separate address again, water tap and sewer tap. I talked to, uh, a fellow by the name of David that's with the soccer association. He said Scott Tiny. He's had David Waldrop out there. He said he met with other city officials on site and they showed him where to do the taps and they did the taps. He actually told me they met with these other city officials before they ever moved the building and was told exactly where to put the building.
Who were they?
Uh, they, I was not aware of who they, and his name is David. He's with the Sher- you know, the soccer association. Uh, you know, I told him, I told him, get all the stuff together and. Because he's also the one that came to me over the stop work order you guys were just talking about. He says he was told by, uh, uh, Steve Patton. And, uh, some other officials to, they could build offices in there because also, he said the city even stores stuff in this building is what he told me. You know, I don't know what stuff we're talking about. I'm just telling you what I know. And he says, uh, uh, and the softball association, and I asked him about the concession. He said, well, that was out there. The plan I have shows no concession. He says he was given permission for concession because the Little League has a concession. Uh, you know, I told him, I showed him my plan. He showed me a plan I'd never seen before. He said, I've never seen your plan before. And I've asked him for revisions and that's where I stand on it right now. I have not been in the building. You know, I did leave a stop work, you know, went out there several times, eight, nine o'clock at night, went over there on the weekend.
Let me ask this question.
Yes, sir.
Well, no, I appreciate, let me ask this question of, uh, of Dan Jones and, yeah, but now, is, since the permits were pulled. On a one inch and four inch, they subject impact fees? Okay, tell me how they're not subject to impact fees. Because the per- permit, you know, because you have to have, you have to have a, a, a pre-appeal plan.
I think, I think.
You have to have tappings. I mean, we charge for tappings.
Yeah, we did.
But then, but then how? Because here, because how many times we have had discussions and debates? And we've had people come in here screaming about the impact fees and he says, you can't wait for one. You've got to wait for all, you know, the, it's got to be a uniform policy.
Right, it does. And Mayor, I'm thinking that the impact fees were actually enacted in October twenty twenty-one. This started happening in July twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, but the thing is, is that.
They should be applied.
Yeah, but well, the thing is, is that there was a grace period if there were already.
There was a year.
If there was a plan already.
If it was already in existence.
Right.
And, and, and Mr. Owens is basically saying is that he was given plans for a storage facility.
Yeah.
Now we have offices and we have, uh, sewer and water tappings, concession stands. So that means there's, you know, we're not just talking, uh, impact fees for, for the water and sewer, but also we're talking about. Impact fees for, uh, for, uh, for, uh, traffic.
Yeah.
And I'm not talking, and I'm not talking about, uh, vehicle traffic, but we're talking about foot traffic. All those apply.
And Mr. Reyes, what, which permit was issued out of, out of public works? Do you know?
I do not know. It would be, if it was out of public works, probably a right-of-way permit.
Okay, okay, it's probably a right-of-way permit coming across the street.
Because it's not, because the electric is not to the church, it's to the parking lot, right?
Yeah, the, the, the electric is, is sitting right out there in the right-of-way, the, the hole is, and then they cut the sidewalk and went over to the building. Underground.
But it's not to the church, it's actually.
Oh, no, it's not to the church.
It's an address, it's a park.
Yeah, that's, that was one of the.
So we have an address to the parking lot. We have an address to the church.
We've, we've tied them all together, yes, ma'am, but that's what happened. I, 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 alls I can tell you is I'm sorry, I don't know how it happened.
Okay.
We have the building as an address and the building was to have a restroom in the, so there was plumbing permit for that. But the electric service somehow got tied. They created an address. It doesn't exist. It's a parking lot of the church across the street. I have since tied it together. And, and since I've talked to, uh, uh, everybody in the last couple of weeks, I found that we did have plumbing taps. I was sure we didn't have plumbing taps.
They're, they're on the park?
They're in the park.
Ms. Shaughnessy, I think, has a few things to add. This is, this is a bit like a puzzle for all of us trying to figure out.
I just wanted to kind of, uh, talk about the impact fees. The reason why there's no charge is because it's city property. So we're not going to charge on ourselves, even though we're letting them, or if we had let them be there. That's the reason why the impact fees wouldn't apply.
The reason why I pack whether we charge or not is that it is something that still has to be discussed. And there was no discussion to be had at any level.
None.
So this was arbitrarily done by a few individuals that took it upon themselves not to follow and apply. Whether it was the, the charter, whatever it is that we have in place, that everybody else has to follow, but arbitrarily. We wind up having an association in collusion with, with management and different directors that basically came up with this. And absconding the authority of, of this body and then allowing, uh, uh, you know, special privileges, which. So let me ask this question. Where does this leave us? You know, what, what's the next step?
Well, I mean.
Where do we go from here?
We have a couple options. One, you can tell them to remove all the, all of their equipment, the building, they can get it off there, or we can just keep, tell them we're gonna seize it and keep it.
If we do keep the building, we need to make sure that's within our building codes because we haven't had the opportunity. I'm sorry.
Hey, one of the easiest things would say, hey, come get it. Get it out of here. You have X amount of days to get it out of here.
We bulldoze it.
Man, you can't make this stuff up.
You can't make this stuff up. And for us, I think Mr. Benau will, will chime in here. The way we all kind of came about discovering this, it just got crazy and crazy. It was like, no way. If we five stood out there, we were like, there's no way in the world that, that this happened. And it did.
And I believe they, they still have not repaired the sidewalk.
No, I was, I was just fixing to say that a little bit. I was by their.
With the liability issue.
That's my, that's my problem. We need to get it fixed ASAP.
That, that needs to be done.
My sentiments, my sentiments at the end of the day is, look what we're doing to these young people that are participants in the soccer programs.
It's, it's bad actors.
Yes, Mayor.
Adults.
Yes, Mayor, and, um, and it's, it's true that it's, it's amazing that this all came about by just. A simple suggestion from a council member, Thompson, over sprigging. Oh, over sprigging and.
You couldn't do that.
Not only were we, did we start uncovering this, but we were almost prepared to throw almost a million dollars. Into further, to further this, this, uh. I, and it, and it's the collusion. And, and you're right, it, there's. A, a lot of bad decisions that, that the victims are truly the, the children. But, um, it's, it's a decisions, decisions that weren't made by, by us.
Okay, so.
Can I say something here?
Yes, sir, go for it.
Okay, so we're about to build us a brand new sports facility and we're gonna be taking care of the children on this. I say we make them pull permits to use this building from the city. The city charges them for this building. We charge them for this building under the intention, when this stadium and all of our stuff is built. They will cease to exist in Sherwood Park and they will pay to have their building removed. Their storage building. There'll be no more offices built. There'll be nothing built in there. No more concession. It's all just a storage building.
Well, that, well, not only that, we have an ordinance in where the ordinance state that it's supposed to be, uh, dedication for. Open space. So we would have to create a temporary land use permit in order for it to be there temporarily for however amount of months. You guys want to have that in there?
Mayor, Mayor.
That's, that's an, to me, that's paperwork, right? Is that just paperwork? No cost, no nothing? Is this just paperwork?
Councilman.
Okay.
I've, I've got something to add. Uh, this is a very difficult, it has a lot of open ends. But we do have a, almost a fourteen acre facility that's dedicated for specifically for soccer. It's, it's there.
It's on the wrong side of town.
It's, it's, it is on the south side, but that shouldn't, that shouldn't play anything. It's dedicated for soccer and. That's the confusing part. Why wouldn't this, the, the park that's dedicated for soccer not be used for soccer?
And that's Comanche Trail?
Yes.
Yes. Well, it's the, it's the west end that was built a long while back, but it was, it's always, it, it's, it's had minimal use by adults. But it's never been part of the, uh, the, uh, the youth, the youth, the youth use, um.
It's definitely for our use, but I personally had complaints where the, the soccer association has taken over the park and not being utilized as a city park anymore.
Well, we, we, we've discussed it several times. The thing is, is that the neighborhood's overwhelmed. It is, and, and now that, that, yeah, you're right, because I think, I think the, the footprint. Extends all the way from the east portion. All the way close to the swimming pools now, correct? And then when the discussion was about the springing, is they were going to, I guess they were going to remodel and, and move some of the goalposts. And I, I, I can't remember how. And, and I, I can't remember how they were gonna do it.
Remodel everything to give more, more use.
Yeah.
Have put more fields.
So, so basically is a, a- according to our ordinance and the Parks Master Plan, we turned a, we turned a green space into a sports facility, which violates the ordinance. And if we were to allow the building, then we have to adjust the ordinance.
Not just the building, but the use, the.
The use for the, the park. So we, so we gotta repurpose it. Okay. So, so before this council, we have options. The option one is to come and pick it all up. And then there is a facility down on the south side, which is Comanche Trail that is made for that. But it still belongs to the city, not any particular association, because I think that became an issue, uh, before. The other one is, is, uh, then we have to go through a whole process of, you know, changing the ordinance, uh, inspectability if it's up to code, and if it's not, you know, who, who?
Who pays for it?
Who pays for that? Yeah, it's on our property. Uh, we still have the, the fixing of the sidewalk. Uh, do, and if we do go without route, do we give them a limit? Because here's the thing is, is that we do have the complex come in, but there's no guarantee that they will want to, uh, pay the fees to use that complex. Is that, because the option's still there to do UTBB right now, they chose not to. And, and, and two specific reasons why they didn't want to work with UTBB was one, because they felt that they would lose the master list to their kids. And two, uh, they would lose the, the revenue of the fees, of the registration. That's why they chose not to, uh, contract with, uh, with UTB. And obviously, that was the decision made back in twenty nineteen before any of us were on here. And so that train was our, where we left the station way before we got here. Now we're finding that out today, so.
Question that I ask, because if this process started in nineteen, the art latest master plan was December thirty first twenty one. So right there, Sherwood was dedicated as an open space.
And the Parks Direction knew this.
Well, I guess we could give them a choice. Move or shut it down, one of the two. You shut the whole association down and go back to UTPB, south side's open to you. We can reduce their fees on, on that just to help them out for a while.
No, 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 they don't, they don't, we, we, we don't get any fees. Those fees are all internal, that's theirs.
I'm talking about you moving to the south side, didn't you say we would have to charge them?
No, no, no. In, in order for them to work at UTBB, they would have to, uh, pay fee, well, basically the fees would be, uh, in order to use it would be by the third, third party management.
And Mayor, remember, we're not making any decisions today.
Yeah.
We're, this is gonna be for two weeks from now.
Okay.
So what about the south side now? If we use the, our park, are we gonna charge them to use the park?
No, we can't.
Okay.
What happens is they collect fees from these teams coming in. They were supposed to pay UTPB ten percent of that fee. They never paid UTPB a dime.
Yeah, that's.
So.
None of the associations.
That wasn't a contract.
That was a contract.
You wanna fill them in on Dr. Woodley Beagle, that's why I got.
Yeah, Dr. Woodley was a little hot, yeah.
She was a little, she was hot, Bill, she was a lot.
So we are not, we're not gonna be putting the kids out. We, so they have two options, which they need to figure out which one they want to do.
Okay.
But we're not, we're not messing with the kids. Sherwood Park's an open space. Right now is, if you got soccer fields up and kids are playing on it, I can't go walking across that empty space, neither can you or anybody else, nor would we do it to interrupt a game, but there would be people that would do that. And they would be technically in their rights to do it, to interrupt every one of their games.
People are walking right across it?
Walk right across the field. They can't say nothing about it. It's open space. They wanna go have a picnic right in the middle of that field, they can have a picnic.
But therein lies, therein lies another problem is that Mr. Reyes wants to get that green space in better shape. So we need, he needs to, if I'm, if I'm speaking, Max, let me know. He wants to pull the goals up so he can go top dress that, so he can, he can resurface it and make it grow some grass and in the bare spots and top dress it, what we call top dress, deep, deep tan it.
Yes, sir.
Spread some sand, level it up and make it, and that was what you were fixing to do and discovered all this, I think.
And also during my conversation, I just wanted to point this out because you mentioned the concrete goals.
We're, we're good, thank you. It's Owens.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
So during my, my conversation with Mr. Martinez when we were having lunch, he was telling me that the reason they concreted these goals in ground was because it was a North Texas rule.
We found out that to be.
Sure, somebody said that.
We found that, no, we found that not to be true.
And that's what I called him on, but he was adamant that it was.
Yeah, we, we, he told us the same thing, but we found out that to be a false statement.
Correct.
Uh, that not.
And he did it so that it wouldn't be moved.
Well.
And for security, of course, for, so they don't fall on the kids.
But also it winds up being saying that it, 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 it's kind of like, this, this is a soccer fields, you know, this, that's really.
Permanent fixture, yes, sir.
It's permanent, oh, these are, this is up for soccer.
Correct.
But never thought about the open space and the, uh, Parks Master Plan and the ordinance, it was a place that we have a lot to deal with. So let me ask you this, Mr. Reyes. Um, you've had the discussion with, um, Mr. Martinez and the association. What, what do you think the best course of action is here?
Well, again, you know, I'm definitely not against soccer. It's just the process that was taken to do this, uh, movement.
But they did it knowingly. They engaged voluntarily, knowingly, uh, what, what they were doing.
Right, they knew what they were doing, but they didn't inform us. They didn't go through the right.
Not the association, but the, 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 the decision makers within that board and the president.
Correct.
Fully, the, the, the response will fully falls on that.
And Mayor, uh, at that, at the minutes, Tom Martinez did stand right there and say, oh, we're gonna move it onto Sherwood, but the ca- the, the other council never said, okay, great. There was never consensus, never a vote on that.
From, and I only speaking for myself on this before, and I understand is that they were going to use, use it for their soccer.
Yes.
But, but never to this extent.
No, it, but.
But we never gave, we never gave, we never, yeah.
You never gave, uh, the former city manager the authority to do what he allowed to have.
We, we never took informal or formal action.
Never. There was even not even a consensus.
Yeah.
And Mayor, uh, as far as the staff stance on what should happen, um, we have an obligation to maintain, to the ordinance that it's an open space. And that's, that's the only position that staff can take. That it has to maintain the master plan and the ordinance until, or if the council decides to do something different. At that point, we would adjust to your decision.
Right now, we're in violation of the ordinance, and I mean, until y'all tell us to do whatever, we're still, we're gonna be in violation.
Wouldn't it be better to then do what the recommendation, move the soccer association to the Comanche Trail where it's already designated as a soccer field soccer association? That would solve that problem. Nobody's getting rid of soccer. And then that opens up Sherwood back to you doing your thing, to making it back to open space for our city. And then it, it solves both solutions. We're not telling them they can't, we're just saying, this is available, it's been available. For whatever reason, they have chose not to use Comanche Trail, but Comanche Trail is very nice. And it's got plenty of room.
And that's what we've been telling them, and I completely agree.
Plenty of room, plenty of parking, lots of parking, even street parking.
It does.
Plenty of street parking.
Okay.
So, yeah, and that's, and then one thing everybody needs to remember is.
There is lights over there.
I think maybe the reason is, you got off track is because, I know we had this conversation, is that those meetings I attended anyway, you could tell softball and soccer weren't gonna go for playing at UTBB. And I remember saying it, and I don't remember if I said, I know I said it to council, we just need to get out of the way because, and let UTBB and soccer and softball work it out, because they won't work it out.
Yeah.
And so when, when they couldn't work it out, I think that's when all this mess started probably. That's just hindsight, but I remember having that conversation because our contract was over.
Yes, sir.
I would have, I, I'm gonna agree with Councilman Wes Swan on that, that's the option. It basically is, is that.
Is that still up for just discussion but no action? It's discussion, it's discussion to give some options. The option would be to, uh, according to the ordinance, Sherwood is, uh, open space. And so the facilities for soccer is at Comanche Trail on the West End Park.
It is designed for soccer down there.
And so, uh, now we would have to have a, a discussion about the facility, the building itself. Because does it, is it removed? And if it's removed, they don't have the money to, to take it out, don't have the money to replace it, move it to, to that park. That, those are different, those are two different conversations.
They had, they had to have a permit, they had to, Elizabeth, they'd have a permit to, where'd you go? They had to have a permit to, to move that building? To be able to remove it, they'd have to have a permit.
And then they need a permit to where they're gonna put it because they're gonna have to have a slab where it's gonna go, so they need to pour a foundation where they can place it unless there's one that they can.
Well, yeah, but we would, we would want on city property anyway.
And then they're gonna have to have. Plumbing, electricity, all that, so.
Yeah, yeah, or, or I guess we could just go bulldozing.
Do their own little, have their own little association. It doesn't need to be right where they're playing soccer at.
Yeah, true.
So it can be in an office building, they can just kill that one off. There's plenty of, of empty spaces in this town. I'm sorry to say that, but there is, so.
Yeah, well.
And it would cost them a lot less money.
So, uh, so what are we leaving at with its, uh, uh, options? Questions or?
Mayor, I think, I think you put it on two weeks at six P M.
Take action?
And take action.
Okay.
And you, you know, then y'all have enough time as a buddy of mine to say, bathe the matter in prayer. To do what's best.
All right. All right, we'll do it and we'll do the, we'll pick up the discussion again in the, uh, in two weeks, which would be the twenty fifth of July. Uh, Max, now that you, uh, joined us off S C T janitorial services.
Max has got all the hard stuff today.
I still had two pages left on the other side.
Do you need to finish?
No, no, ma'am.
You know, my only concern still is, two weeks is still a long time. I still think we got liability out there with that sidewalk, and I'm concerned about that.
That, that sidewalk has to be addressed ASAP.
Yes, sir.
Immediately. And so, and if, uh, we have to address it, we're sending, we're sending somebody a bill. So need to find out who we're sending the bill to, to be able to mitigate the, uh, the, the liability.
I don't know, we can't take action, but.
That's what I mean, but.
We got liability issues.
You could direct staff to.
Well, direct, council, I'd say we'd direct the city count, uh, the city manager to, uh, with, uh, to direct the, first direct to communication.
I can get it, if need be.
Yeah. Let, let him be the bad guy.
Thank you.
And so to direct that, uh, that, uh, that repair of that sidewalk, be mitigated immediately.
Yes, sir.
It's a, it's a problem.
Yeah, it, it's a liability. So S C T janitorial service.
So again, just going through, getting acquainted with, with my files in my office, I went through some stuff and, and found that roughly nine, ten years ago, the Parks Department hired a lady to clean two facilities. Uh, at the time it was Floyd Gwynn and Longdale. Since Floyd Gwynn has been under construction, it changed over to, to Sherwood, uh, the community centers. So this lady would go and, and clean up before and after our events that were holding over there. And a lot of times what we found is they were either not showing up or showing up like fifteen, ten minutes till the actual party. And so at the end of the day, what was happening is because the facility wasn't ready, we were having to give refunds back to the rent, rentee. This has happened for a while, and then as I was going through a lot of invoices that I ran into, she was also doing some work, uh, out at the golf course and any other facility that was needed. But according to the, to the contract that she had, it was only for those two facilities, uh, Floyd Gwynn and Longdale. This one was made in, uh, two thousand sixteen. This current one was made in two thousand sixteen with the one year, uh, additions if need be before termination. So this has never been updated and it was just a.
Did council take action on this?
Yes.
This was, and the, the last was twenty sixteen?
Twenty sixteen.
For janitorial services?
Yes, sir.
At, uh, which was Floyd Gwynn?
It says Floyd Gwynn.
And Longdale, but then it shifted to Longdale, Sherwood during the, uh, construction?
Correct.
Okay. And so, uh, what was the, uh, what was the rate that they were being paid?
For Floyd Gwynn, at the time it was two hundred and fifty dollars per visit. And Longdale was three hundred and twenty-five dollars per visit.
Three hundred and fifty?
Three hundred, three hundred and twenty-five. Estimated, uh, contract at the end of the year was roughly sixty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Let me ask this question. Uh, since twenty sixteen, you said it was for one year, was annual automatic renewal?
No, options.
Open ended, uh?
It was option. Yeah, option for one year.
And then just kind of just fell off the radar.
Right.
Wow, okay.
Tell me, Mr. Reyes, was this executed? Why was I reading somewhere that I thought one of those contracts was never executed?
Ten years ago, I've never found a contract for this. This one right here was drawn up in sixteen. And since then, I haven't found an updated one.
So in twenty thirteen was the whole program started?
Yes, sir.
And it, and it was never executed then?
No.
And then for three?
From what I've found.
Were, uh, unable, unable to find that there was an execution.
Right. I, I at one point contacted, her name is Rosie Lopez. I contacted her and she said that the past admin gave their, gave her an open ended P O and that she could charge whatever she wanted. She flat out told me that.
Let me ask this question.
I also have emails that show that. At one point, there was two consecutive weeks that went by that she sent us invoices for every day of the week. We looked back at our calendar and there was nothing scheduled. So these, these invoices are everywhere as far as.
Can you make that available to the council?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I have several e-mails that I, I was able to find.
Hey, let me, let me ask this question. Let's talk about RFPs, RFQs real, real briefly.
Yes, sir.
According to this. So is there something within, uh, city policy or city charter that arbitrarily gives the authority for every department head or mid-management to arbitrarily go out and create these type of, whether it's verbal, contractual, without approval from the council or even bringing it to council presentation? Arbitratorily, there's something within the city that arbitrarily gives them that authority? Is there the authority? Does it exist or is it just?
Something that I.
This is the way we, things were always done.
I can speak to that just because I asked yesterday.
Okay.
Can I put Nira on the spot?
Yeah.
No, she, Nira's saying no.
It just, it just happened yesterday because this came up with another discussion that I was having about the cleaning services, not in general. And so Nira could explain it better to us that somewhere in our city charter, over the years, it has allowed our department heads to make these decisions, is that?
Actually, it's not in our charter, it's in our regular county ordinances.
Okay.
It's under chapter one, I believe. You'd have to change that, where it does give the directors authority to create these relationships because they know what is better in the best interest.
So it, it does exist?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
I just don't know the, but I know it's in chapter one of our city.
Okay, can we get that? Can we look at it? Okay.
Second on that, I, I was told that the reason it was able to be done was because it was under a certain amount.
Well, that, that question came up with me and myself again yesterday asking this question. Where did we get out of hand? Because I was under the understanding fifty thousand over had to come for council approval. And that's when I found out yesterday that is not the case. Um, because our policy or whatever we have in place allows these directors to do, so we need to, we need to look at that and change that.
Sure.
That's an interesting.
So what kind of legal ramification do we have to go back on this lady to collect our money? ramification do we have to go back on this lady to collect our money for?
Services not rendered.
For services not rendered?
She has actually turned in her thirty day notice, oddly enough, last Thursday.
Well, I wonder why.
Did you contact her? Did you contact, uh, S and T janitorial services?
Yes, sir.
When did you contact her?
I contacted her on, on July fifth. Well, I contacted her on, uh, on Friday, I guess it was August or June, the last day of June, on Friday.
Okay.
I contacted her and I wanted, I asked her if she would come to my office so that we could discuss her contract. She came, or no, she said that she was busy because of the Fourth of July weekend and that she couldn't meet till Wednesday the fifth. On Wednesday the fifth, we, we scheduled a meeting and she came to my office. And we talked about it, and we talked about her duties and how long, and she told, I mean, she told me everything that I'm telling you.
So this is how you became aware?
Yes, sir. And plus staff, because again, we're giving, giving back all these refunds. And then I was going back to, first of all, seeing why we weren't doing it in-house, which we're doing it in-house now. But, so I was kinda interviewing who's, who's been in, who's been overseeing this and just getting everybody's, you know, word or whatever. So when she was there, we were talking and she was just happy-go-lucky and laughing and, you know, I thought that it wasn't professional, so I kinda called her on it. And I was like, look, we're talking about a, a serious matter and I wanna know why. And she just kept on and on, and I said, you know what, what I'm gonna do is, cause this was on Wednesday, I said, I'm gonna give you the weekend off. I said, I don't want you to clean this weekend. And she was like, why? I'm like, just, I'm just gonna give the weekend off. I was trying to just not be. So anyway, she looked at me, she said, why, you gonna fire me? I said, that's not what I said. I said, just take the weekend off. We'll revisit and then we'll talk again, uh, next week. So that's the fifth. The following Thursday, we met here. And I basically gave the description of what was going on, the fees and what she was charging. Once we finished this meeting here, it wasn't thirty minutes before she called me, or she emailed me, and I got the email. And it says, and I wrote it down right here, it says, uh, Max, I was thinking, and I've decided to terminate my contract and I'm putting in my, my thirty days notice. And it was funny because it was, I had just left the conference room or the council chambers here and. The agenda meeting. And she called me while I was in my truck going back to my office. So somebody told her.
So Mayor, um, the other thing that I would like counsel for you to consider is that we just negotiated or we just took a contract for janitorial services.
Correct.
Here just recently, and this wasn't on there. This, this janitorial service was not in that bid. Why it wasn't, I don't know.
And that was the, one of the red flags that I got, because I knew.
Separation.
Well, I knew that we were, we had a janitorial service that was doing the entire city, and then we had ours.
But I have a concern on that janitorial service, because they.
I've asked for it to be brought back up on the twenty seventh.
Okay, okay. I have a question on that because of an advertisement that came up after that fact. Okay, so, so as of right now, you, you, you put them on pause and the, uh, S and T janitorial has given a thirty day notice of cancellation on their part. So they volunteered to opt out?
Yes.
So we're, you're gonna handle internally. So obviously, the thing is, is that I guess staff informed you that they were doing the work even, but still paying out the service.
Correct. I touched base with, with the person that did the facility this past weekend and everything went without.
Max, how, how long have you been in Plymouth City?
A little bit over the mo- over a month.
June fifth.
He is scratching where it itches and he is finding stuff, so.
Thank you.
Well, I think you, uh, I think you got more itching and more scratching to do and.
I do.
We appreciate you bringing this up and so we, uh, now we know that every time you're gonna show up, you, here comes the reaper. We got more stuff, but I'm glad you're doing it. So thank you, I appreciate that. Anything else you wanna add on this?
No, I was gonna add a little bit on the other one on Sherwood about, cause but I don't know if that's.
What do you got?
Yeah, I can save it.
Okay, okay, yeah. Yeah, we'll just bring it, we'll just save it for, for two weeks, yeah. All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's go for some easy stuff now. Item seven, discuss authority of ban, uh, abandonment of ninety eighth street right away in section thirty-four, block forty-two, township one. All right, I was going to suspend the rules and put you up first, but you weren't in the, in the chamber.
I would suggest we just accept this and move on.
Occidental Permian Limited has requested that the city abandon point fifty-five acres of ninety eighth street right of way to coincide with the planned development. The abandoned, abandonment is between Andrews Highway and L A, east of Andrews Highway located in Northport Commercial Sites. And the right of way was dedicated by Platte, but the roadway was never constructed. The city will not retain any easements over the abandoned street. And the abandonment will facilitate approximately a forty thousand square foot commercial building. The business owner has agreed to the compensation due for this abandonment and the eleven thousand two hundred thirty dollar check has been provided. And I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Catherine, any questions? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, seeing that there is no more business before this council, I have a motion to adjourn by council member.
Same age.
Swann, second by council.
I second that.
Vasquez, only favor, Kidding, but saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing kidding, but saying nay. Motion passing unanimously, six to oh, we are adjourned. See you back at six.